All right, I'm going to call it over to the regular council meeting here on Tuesday, August 2nd, 6:30 PM, taking place at the W.C. O'Neil Arena Complex at 24 Reed Avenue. As always, we are in person but also on Zoom as well as airing through our social media at Town of St. Andrews on Facebook. And I just wanted to say how good it is to continue to have all of council gather. It's been a, it's been a, now it feels more normal like when we first got together. So, at this time, I'm going to get into the recording of attendance. I note that all members of council are in attendance with exception of Counselor Guma Shell. I believe it's 1:00 AM where he is right now, so I think you still should have had to call in and spend a few hours with us, but we'll let it go. And first of all, I wanted to recognize that we are on the unceded traditional territory of the Pesca Tumagati people. I'll be looking for a mover to approve the agenda as circulated. I've got Counselor Heenan, a seconder is Deputy Mayor Akaji. I'll just note one little thing, we'll call it a friendly amendment. It does say that we're going to be going to second and third reading for bylaw 22-04, but in your package, you only see it for second reading. We're going to stick to the second reading simply for the fact that if we do both tonight, I'll have to read a seven-page bylaw versus by title, so we'll do that at the following meeting, and there's no real-time requirement on that other than it's something that we have to legally do anyway. So, any other discussion on the agenda? Okay, all in favor of approving this agenda, please signify by saying aye. That is everybody, so the agenda has been approved. Any disclosure of conflict of interest for this evening? Seeing none, if anything comes up throughout the course of the meeting, please let me know. We had quite a few presentations our last meeting, so none this evening, but we will approve the minutes. And before I get through them, you know, I like to do these as quick as possible. Is there anyone that has any changes they'd like to make to any of the minutes? All right, then I'm going to fly through them. So, the first are the minutes of the 22-07-04 Public Hearing of Objections to Amendment MP 20-06 to the Municipal Plan, MP 20-01, and Amendment Z 22-02 to the zoning bylaws, Z 22-01, which was Monday, July 4th, 2022, 6:30 PM. Could I have a mover to approve those minutes? I've got Counselor Heenan, seconded by Counselor Hurdle. All in favor of approving those minutes, please signify by saying aye. That's everybody, those minutes have been approved. The next one are the minutes of the 22-07-04 Public Hearing of Objections to Amendment Z 22-03 to the zoning bylaws, Z 22-01, on Monday, July 4th, 2022, at 6:45 PM. Could I have a mover? Counselor Blanchard, a seconder, Deputy Mayor Akaji. All in favor of approving those minutes, please signify by saying aye. Everybody, those are approved. The next one are the minutes of the 22-07-04 Regular Council Meeting on Monday, July 4th, 2022, at 6:50 PM. Could I have a mover for those minutes? I've got Counselor Heenan, and seconded by Counselor Neal. All in favor of adopting those minutes, please signify by saying aye. Perfect. And the last ones that we'll be doing for minutes this evening is the minutes of the 22-07-18 Regular Council Meeting on Monday, July 18th, 2022, at 6:30 PM. Once again, looking for a mover. Deputy Mayor Akaji, seconded by Counselor Blanchard. All in favor of approving those minutes, please signify by saying aye. That is everybody, and again, all the minutes have been adopted and approved. Thank you very much, council. Communications, we're jumping right ahead to the staff reports. Mr. Spear was on vacation last week, so we understand that obviously we didn't get that in for this package. Is there anything that, Mr. Spear, you'd like to highlight or just overall, they're all included, enclosed within our packages?
I just, Your Worship, just maybe one thing. I'm sure by now most of the town has heard that we had the fire at the Wharf a few weeks ago, which we were happy the fire department responded, but it should be noted that a couple of local citizens were having to be down there and also participated in putting out the fire, at least addressing it before the fire department could get there. So, I would like to, I think it was Alex Ross and Dan Brown that had gone down and sort of addressed it at least so it didn't get further ahead. So, I would like to thank them on behalf of the town for looking after that.
I think as well, there was a boat actually in the water as well, and Dwayne Doucette was throwing water on it too, so quick action could be the difference in that one. And I don't know, is there an investigation going on around that, or is it closed, or is there any speculation what would cause that?
Well, the speculation was that there was somebody smoking and just butted out on it, and I'll be honest, I would have never thought in a million years these water-soaked piles could catch fire, but obviously they can. So, we're looking at, even though it's supposed to be a non-smoking facility, we may stick out some ashtrays, or you know what I mean, to put out there just in case, because there are people who will light up and can't get them down. There's other stuff there, Worship, and maybe next report, I would like to highlight some stuff for the public.
Sure, we can add it in the next meeting.
Yeah, for the next meeting, just for all the work that's being done by the town so people can appreciate what is going on by staff.
Perfect. Well, we certainly understand while you're on vacation that you shouldn't type up that four-page report, so understandable. Did council have any questions on anything within the staff reports? No, so I will be looking at this point for someone to move to accept the staff reports and financial reports as presented in this package. I've got Counselor Heenan, seconded by Counselor Hurdle. All in favor of adopting these staff reports, please signify by saying aye. Those have been accepted, and we'll get kind of the, I guess, the shortened summary for public knowledge and everything on what's happening in the town for the next meeting. So, at this point, we're going to move to the introduction consideration of passing of bylaws and motions. The first one, as always, will be kicked off with the talented Deputy Mayor Kate Akaji under Finance and Administration.
Oh, my microphone was on. Is my microphone on? Because the button was on. F A 220615, August 2nd, 2022, and it's paving the parking lot at Point Park at Prince of Wales and Water Street, updated quote. So, the background is this. At the June 20th, 2022 Regular Council Meeting, council supported a motion to pave the parking lot at the Point Park near the Van Horn Trail, head for $12,000 plus HST as part of increasing accessibility in this area. When staff approached the company to complete the paving work, it was noted that the price of asphalt had doubled. Due to the increase, staff requested additional quotes from several paving companies in the area for the work. Provided with this report is a copy of the lowest bid quote to complete the work at $19,100 plus HST from Sewell's Paving. Staff are seeking approval of council for the additional funds to complete the paving work. Note that as stated on June 20th, all capital projects are under budget for 2022, and the additional $7,000 is within the capital budget for 2022. So, the motion is this. That council approve the paving of the parking lot near the Van Horn Trail and at the Point Park at the corner of Prince of Wales and Water Street for a price of $19,100 plus HST to Sewell's Paving. And I so move this, Your Worship.
And could I have a seconder for that motion? I've got Counselor Heenan, and we're going to be open up for discussion or debate. Any member of council, I've got a few. We'll start with Counselor Hurdle.
Thank you, Worship. I guess when turning to third-party vendors for quotes, is there any provision to have a cost breakdown when we're asking for a quote, or is it just essentially the lowest bidder that we accept?
Well, typically, we accept the lowest bidder in a small project like that. So, what happened though is that on the contract that we'd quoted on originally, that's what happens, is these bigger tenders, is they quote in every component of the project. And so, when we came up with that original quote, we used what was the asphalt price on that, but when we submitted it and asked for the extra work by the subcontractor, they said they couldn't do it anymore, that they'd submitted that price back in March, and the price of asphalt had more than doubled over that time, and you know, would have put them back. So, for this, it's just bare-bones asphalt, that the grading work has pretty much already been done, we did a little bit of our own, and then the contractor that worked on Prince of Wales Street graded it for us. So, pretty much, it's just going to be the asphalt enrolling for that area.
Thank you very much. This is going to be a minor nickel-and-dime question, but leave it to a bank manager to ask this question. I know in the report, it says that $7,000 is within the capital budget, but that doesn't include tax, which would make it more than $8,000 if we include the tax in that. Is that still within the budget?
Well, that's correct. It's about, you have to add about four and a half percent on top of the final price, to get our final converted price. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Akaji.
Sorry, Your Worship. Do we get the HSD back, though?
In municipal world, we get about 75% of it back, more or less. It's like 74.63% or something, but it's about 75% of it back for most projects. Funny enough, the arena and the Wharf get it all back, but we'll have to talk to the Finance Minister to figure out why.
My other thing, doesn't have anything to do with this except for the place where it is referenced. We keep calling it the Point, and I know mayor and council have done that, but it is technically called Indian Point. And if you take the Indian out, I'm afraid that you're going, they're going to forget where it is. It is Indian Point, we haven't been able to change it. As a municipality, as mayor and council, we have to get all the people that are necessary in order to change this so that it becomes not what they call a derogatory term, but if you take the Indian out, I am afraid that you are not going to remember that we are on the indigenous land. I know that we, the mayor, recognizes our territory, but if you forget them, we have been there, we are there now, and we will be there, whether you like it or not, we are going to live there as indigenous people. And the Pesca Tumagati people are recognized. I would like it seen to be renamed as Pasma Quadi Park, but we can't do that till federal government, provincial government, municipal government, and the chief and tribes get together and make it so. But I think with our references, we need to continue to reference it as Indian Point because that is what it's called, and I think we need to continue to do that. So, that's just my pet peeve of the day. Thank you very much, Your Worship.
I wouldn't even call it a pet peeve, Deputy Mayor Akaji. You're certainly well-spoken and in the right to say that. Just to echo those comments, I welcome those conversations when the, when the timing's right for everybody, because our, our door is open to make that change when the time comes. So, any other member of council? Okay, I will call the question then. All in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye. That is everybody, so that has been approved. We have nothing under Public Works, Public Safety, or Business Tourism, Heritage and Culture, but not to throw you in the spot, Counselor Hurdle, but you're the next one up from it, so is there any way that you could do the Recreation Community Services? And I would say that there's a blank in that motion, maybe put Mallory Sports Field, just because that was the number-one location. Of course, we can amend it if we need to. Before you read that motion, I know we're going to debate it, but maybe it would be good just for Mr. Nauper to give us a brief summary of the open house, just for the public's knowledge as well as councils on what happened. They looked at two locations, but I'll pass it over to you, Mr. Nauper.
Thank you, Your Worship. So, we did have an open house on July 25th, there was approximately 20 people that were here, and thank you, thank you to Counselor Neal for participating and being here and that. So, there was quite a discussion for about an hour and a half on the options for either the Queen Street Extension or the Harry Mallory Sports Field. There were multiple discussions, pros and cons on both. At the Queen Street Extension, discussions were about noise and how that would fit in with the residential area, that it is a smaller park zone, although it is closer, an easier walking, especially with sidewalks and being a flatter zone versus the Harry Mallory from being downtown. There were, there were some concerns about loss of the natural habitat there with the Harry Mallory. There was options for a larger park, there were some written concerns in about loss of trees. The Dog Park Committee has said they would like to see trees within both parks, which either option is, is available. There were concerns about distance away with the sports field for regular users. There was discussion about, when you're talking tourists coming to the area, that most of them will travel to either park location, although one is closer to one of the, one's closer to the Algonquin, one's closer to the campgrounds, but tourists will travel to either. But they, everybody was in favor of having a dog park, they all saw the benefits to having one in the community. In fact, you've seen a couple of letters where people were asking for more. I'll just note, council, that there is a large beach area, when the water is receded, where people can still take their pets without being within town property, so that's another where, place for people to go. You'll see that in the breakdown of the report, there was discussion on the design, that there should be some openness, but there should also be some trees for dogs and some shade. There were suggestions on how this would be maintained in the wintertime, how would, you know, we deal with snow plowing or clearing so that access could still be available. But for the most part, I mean, it was, for a conclusionary thing, something else for council to consider is the costing of either park. Again, Harry Mallory is looking at about $120,000 versus the Queen Street Extension, about $60,000. So, those are aspects to take into consideration, and you can read the final report that's there, but I think you have a tough decision to make on a, on a location, but the Dog Park Committee is willing to support you in either option. They would like to start fundraising and getting a park going, so you do have pros and cons to both, but I'll leave it up to council for final choice.
Perfect, thank you. And it sounds like a lot of that feedback is very consistent with some of the letters council's received, and Mr. Nauper sent those all to council, so we've received that. So, at this time, maybe we'll read the motion, then open up for council for any questions. So, over to you, Counselor Hurdle.
Thank you, Worship. I don't know if I can fill the very well-worn and speedy sneakers of Counselor Guma Shell, but I'll do my best. This is in reference RSC 220610. The subject is the Off-Leash Dog Park Update for Council. Background is council has been in consultation with the Dog Park Committee since June 6th, 2022, regarding the potential of a new off-leash dog park in St. Andrews. The council was presented with two options for locations, Harry Mallory Sports Field and the Queen Street Extension. A mail-out was sent to 1,500 homes and businesses in St. Andrews and surrounding area to attain feedback and to host an open house for comments on July 25th, 2022. Please see the attached staff report for information on feedback collected. Through all the consultation processes, an off-leash dog park was supported, but there have been, there has been all, debate on both locations identified with pros and cons. Based on the information collected, council can make an educated decision on a proposed location of the park, or table the decision on the location to further review the park locations. If a park location is selected, the Dog Park Committee and the town can work together on developing the park. The Dog Park Committee itself is committed to fundraising at least 50% of the funds for the park. The park construction will not commence until a minimum of 50% of funds are raised. Working with the town with a memorandum of understanding on ongoing supervision, maintenance, and enforcement measures for the park, and the Town of St. Andrews is willing to collect the funds on behalf of the committee and provide tax receipts for funds collected, and council can budget 50% of the funds for the park as part of the 2023 budget process. And the motion before us is that council selects, and I'll put in here, Harry Mallory Sports Field park location based on public consultation to establish an off-leash dog park in the Town of St. Andrews. I so move.
And a seconder, please. Counselor Blanchard, and now we're open for discussion, so of course, you could ask any questions from the open house, but also, I'd really like to hear if anyone feels contrary on, on Mallory Sports Field, just so we can potentially look at an amendment if that's how somebody feels. So, council, I'd love to hear from you, what's your pleasure? Otherwise, I'll call the question. Deputy Mayor Akaji.
Okay. Weighing the pros and cons, and looking at all the letters. Oh, shit. Weighing the pros and cons and looking at all the letters that we got, and I thank Counselor Neal for going to that meeting. Sorry I missed it, but I think I would feel better if the dog park was downtown, downtown, I guess I'd call it, near the Langmaid Park, because I think it's just more convenient for seniors who have dogs and cats, or dogs, not cats, because they're not going to walk their cats. I guess we're basing it on just dogs only, what are you going to do for the cats? But I've heard from a lot of seniors, and they said that it's just easier for them to walk there, take their dog there, let them off-leash. This is not our first kick at the can for a dog park, and kudos to the people who are trying it again, because we seem to, it seems to get so far and then it knocks down, but I would prefer the Queen Street Extension for a dog park, just because it is closer and, and the seniors would find it much easier with their pets to go down there, and that's just my opinion, but I prefer that than Mallory Park where there's a sports field, and if they're playing sports and the dog gets loose, then there's trouble. But that's just my theory, don't beat me up on the way home, but you know, I think it's wonderful to have dogs, and I think it's wonderful to have a park, but I, and I think there would be a better park, a better place to have it, but that's my opinion.
Thank you, Worship. Deputy Mayor, so we'll see if you can, of course, make a motion to amend, but I'll see first, if you want to just get a feel of the land from everybody else first before you do that to know if I'll carry. Counselor Heenan.
Yes, Your Worship and council. I really don't have any preference to either one. The only thing that bothers me is the, is the half difference in pricing, 120 versus 60,000. I find that they're going to have quite a job to fundraise, $60,000, and then I find it hard that we could probably have to take 60,000 out of a budget next year. 30,000 to me is a lot easier. That's not saying that I'm throwing my support to the Queen Street Extension, I'm just saying I think that the costs are like out of the range for, for public fundraising for $60,000. I find that's a lot of money. And we, as a, as a municipality, 30 is easier than 60, but that's just my, that's just my opinion. I don't want that to sway the location, but I just worry that it's not going to be feasible to do the 120,000. Thank you, Worship.
Thank you for your comments. I know that Mr. Nauper did ask the fundraising committee, I believe, and they, their preferred location is the Mallory Sports Field, and they felt confident in their ability to raise $60,000.
Through you, Worship, that's correct. They did present to council originally that the preferred location that they had was the sports field, and that they're, they are still committed to raising 50,000, or 60,000 that was submitted in the letters.
Okay. And did they say for themselves what the main determinant was? Was it the trail network that's there? I know there's one at kind of both ends of it, but was it the washrooms? Was there, just, just to clarify for your points, council?
Yeah, through you, Worship, I think it's a mix. I think you've got a larger space optionable there. Washrooms are already existing there as they're not down on the Queen Street area. There's lots of room for parking, and to Deputy Mayor Akaji's note, one of the actual comments that came from the open house was, a lot of families do go and play soccer and baseball in that area, and a lot of families travel from all over and do bring their pets, and they thought it was also an option to be able to bring the whole family to use the, the fields and that. So, just as, those were some of the comments that came through.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Blanchard.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. And actually, I did speak with, I wasn't able to attend the meeting, but I did speak with a member of the, of the Dog Park Committee, and, and Mr. Nauper was kind enough to sort of reveal, I guess, some of the comments that they had made. I guess I am supportive of the Harry Mallory location, though I would support the, the Queen Street one as well, but just based on, again, what the, the Dog Park Committee had stated, and again, the location of the infrastructure, parking, washroom, things like that, I do think it makes sense down there to have sort of things sort of together like that. Again, one of the concerns was about the number of trees being cut down in that area, so I am concerned about that. I was made aware that there was some discussion of possibly shifting the actual location of, of the dog park around in the Harry Mallory area. It may not be exactly where we have it right now, maybe, we may be able to shift it over and maybe save some trees. I was happy to hear that they're also interested in having some trees within that, so perhaps some selective cutting would be, would be a way to avoid taking down a large swath. I'm hoping, like I said, once we start to dig into the details, some of those things might come out, and that, like I said, might even save some cost on the overall price of the, of the project. So, I'm supportive of, of Harry Mallory. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hurdle.
Thank you, Worship. And just pursuant to that, I guess what I, what I'd like to see is, is a cost update on if we take a very soft approach on removing trees from the park. I'm assuming that a considerable amount of that cost is from tree removal, and if we look at, you know, very limited and maybe just underbrush clearing as opposed to actually taking down any large section of trees, what kind of cost savings we could have, and if we could, we could take a look at that. I have a second, second question, more of a, more of a, I guess, a comment more than anything else. One of the things I'd like to see, and I know that we have, talking about a memorandum of understanding here as well, I'd like to, if we can, encourage like an ongoing committee activity, not to say that I want to really be, have the town be arm's length from this, but I think that when we have a committee that is ongoing in fundraising activities, there's a sense of pride and ownership as well, as you have a number of members who feel like this park belongs to them, and they stay active throughout the duration of having this dog park, and actually, some of those funds can go on to maintain the park and helping to service the park as well, is if we can any way encourage that to be not just a relationship that helps create the park, but maintains the park into the future too.
Thank you, Counselor Earl. I think staff, we had a conversation just about, you know, leaving trees up, but also having it where it's open enough where if a dog had a droppings, you'd see it actually do the droppings, or there was a confrontation between two animals, they would understand what was going on. So, I, I think there's a balance there, and I think staff's trying to reach that as well. Would that be a safe assumption if it was at that location?
Yes, Your Worship. One thing about the original location too is that it's a little bit wetter, so we've got a, you know, you're going to have to go with whatever trees you cut down, you're going to have to grab out stumps and stuff, so that was a big cost besides cutting the trees was kind of preparing.
The ground.
The property, so it's going to be a bigger, you know, I think it's a great idea to look at it, see how we could shift it and stuff, to move it, then that'll change the costs, you know, dramatically. The only other thing, Your Worship, I'd like to just throw at you, just as part of the discussion, is during the winter, they wanted it to be a 12-month-a-year park, which I think most of them always are, but if you can envision Harry Mallory, it's quite a swing up there, and so in discussions with the operations manager today, he says, you know, for smaller storms or under 10 centimeters during the normal run, somebody can take a swing up there and plow it out, but for anything over 10 centimeters, it might be three or four days, because that clogs up the downtown, they need all the equipment to remove. So, just so people understand that it, you know, there might be times of inaccessibility, and even during the winter, as you know, excuse me, there's no sidewalks or anything on, along cemetery, and we are going to be building a trail there soon, but that's not going to, the plan isn't to plow it right now, to be perfectly honest, that may come in the future. And so, during the winter, that won't be a very good walk, so once the snow falls, people will have to drive up there, you know, in the most cases, just because of the narrow roadways and stuff for safety purposes, or that'd be the recommendation. So, you know, there's a little bit of a challenges there, I'm not saying it's, you can't overcome it, but just to be aware that once the winter hits, that's going to be a little bit of a tougher place for the users to be able to get access to.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. Anyone else? Counselor Neal will round it out.
Thank you, Worship. Yeah, to be honest, I think you guys covered pretty much everything there, but I was just going to say again, I don't really have a strong feeling for one or the other. I definitely see the pros and cons to both of them. I do like the sort of additional larger size of the Harry Mallory one, and again, being at the meeting the other night and talking to some of the tree, or the Dog Park Committee members, they seem to be very open again to leaving some of those selective trees. Shade was a big, a big pro for that area. I do share the concerns, it was something I was going to raise myself, about what happens in the winter. Again, obviously paving that, or sorry, I can see that. That's basically where I thought we were going to end up going, because again, when you're plowing that dirt road, dirt parking lot, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is very difficult on some of the equipment and...
Well, and the operations manager said the same thing. That field was never expected to be open during the winter, so there would have to be a different dressing of gravel just to be able to plow. The washrooms would have to be closed probably late October, because it's only a shallow line, it's not buried six feet, it's basically much more than, not much more than garden hose buried less than 12 inches.
Right, there'd be no heat there, right?
Pardon?
There'd be no heat.
No heat or anything, and so there'd be significant investment, like he says, $40,000 to rerun a water line and winterize the whole building if that was council's wish, may not be phase one of, of the project, but just so everyone's aware, having said that, there's absolutely no facilities any time of the year at the other location, but just so we know that even at the Harry Mallory, it's, you're only going to get probably eight or 10 months, not even that, of use of the washroom facilities over there for the time being.
Okay, so, and then the only other comment I'd have would be, again, with regards to the Queen Street Run, we did talk about it briefly at the end of that meeting, but the diagram that we were provided, again, it doesn't necessarily have to be a complete rectangle. I'm sure there's ways where we can separate it so that there's a bit more of a buffer from the homes, if that was the direction that we went, and possibly utilize a bit more of the space towards the Queen Street, the Queen Street Extension, sorry. Again, just a comment again, it doesn't have to be that perfect rectangle.
Perfect, thank you, Counselor Neal. We'll add an opportunity to speak, unless anyone has anything new. I think probably we're wondering right now if it's the Queen Street Extension or Mallory Sports Field, I don't know if you wanted to make an amendment to see if you have enough votes to change that, or if you'd like me to go ahead with a question. I guess I'll look over to Counselor Heenan and Deputy Mayor Akaji if you'd like to amend it.
I understand why Harry Mallory is, is the preferred choice, and that their dog and that they're dog owners, so they should know what they want. I'm, I'm a cat person. I don't care what the dogs want, but you can put it either place. And, you know, I'm just glad to see this finally coming forward because we've had it so many times. And those guys deserve a place to free-range roam. They're animals.
Perfect. Well, with that being said, then I will call the question if everyone's comfortable. All in favor of this motion? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's everybody. So the location has been selected as the Mallory Sportsfield. So we'll see how we make out with the fundraising. And again, I, we'll have a conversation during budget time, assuming again that the municipality is invited to that process as a council. But, you know, there's opportunities within, this is something tourists can also enjoy. So we have a tourism accommodation levy too to help out with potentially some of those funds. So more to come and some more consultation, it says, based on public consultation. So we'll go from there. But I think they'll look at the plan and probably bring it back to council for a little bit more of almost a site plan. At this time, we're going to switch to Counselor Heenan, who is usually the star with the longest role of these council meetings. We're going to start off, this one is in a motion, so I can kick it off. It's a discussion around PED 220812, which is amendments to MP 20-06 to municipal plan, MP 20-02 and Z 22-02 to the zoning bylaws, Z 22-01, which is Compass Housing Inc., as most of us know it. There is a report on staff which gives you a summary on page 75, as well as it takes a little bit of consideration into feedback. And then staff made a bit of a recommendation after the, they, you know, highlighted the planning advisory committee. So the staff recommendation would be recommended to see the site plan before we go to second and third reading. I think that's something that we'd all agreed that we'd like to see. But maybe Mr. Nauper, we had a conversation here, Mr. Spear, we had a conversation. If you want to highlight maybe an extra step that we want to do to make sure that the public is as aware of this as possible. I would say that council's right now owning this process. But in the same sense, we certainly want to hear feedback from the public, but we're all committed to finding an affordable housing option in this community. So Mr. Nauper, maybe with that, I'll hand it over to your, Mr. Spear, whichever prefers.
Thank you, Your Worship. So in discussions, as you've gone through first reading, you've hosted a public hearing of objections and it's gone to PAC. You have that information that's been provided to you in this report. One of the, I think, staff, we've had a discussion about this as a good option, is once you've had your site review of, from the developer, is that you do call another public hearing of objections and that we do another polling out to the public. And then that will give another opportunity with the site plan in place, with the visuals of the buildings that are addressing the concerns that have been submitted. And then you can hear the public again through that process. So that would give you two public hearings of objection through that, which is a lot of feedback from the public. So, and I would suggest that's done before second and third reading. So it is anticipated at this point that we're looking at a site plan sometime into September that would be brought forward to council and then we would proceed to do another public hearing of objections after that.
Counsel, I'd love to have your thoughts on that. Personally, I welcome any opportunity to get more feedback. This isn't something that we're just pushing through. We're definitely listening. But it's something that we are going to accomplish as a council, whether it be there or anywhere. But right now, a lot of feedback that we've received is that is a suitable location for such a project. But with that being said, let's make sure that some of the neighbors that said they didn't have an opportunity at the previous hearing objections has yet another opportunity to have a hearing of objections. And they'll actually have more details because they'll be able to see the actual site plan. So does anyone feel contrary to that? Myself, I welcome as much public engagement as we can in this process. Anyone? No. So Mr. Nauper, I think that's the next step. So site plan, then we'll call for additional hearing of objections. And then from there, we can discuss potentially going to second and then after that, maybe third reading. So is that all you had for that one, I feel?
Through you, Your Worship, that was it. The purpose of this was to bring forward all of the public hearing of objections information as well as the letters submitted. So council is quite aware now of where we are at with the public and their concerns.
Perfect. Thank you for that, Mr. Nauper and of course staff for leading the process. The next one is a motion, so I will pass it over to you, Counselor Heenan, at this time.
Thank you, Worship and Council. PED 210707. PASM Aquadi Lodge requests for extension on town of St. Andrews land at Bar Road and Champlain Avenue. At the special council meeting of August the 9th, 2021, council provided to PASM Aquadi Lodge Incorporated first right of refusal on 12 acres of land at the corner of the Bar Road and Champlain Avenue for the proposed development of the new lodge facility. PASM Aquadi Lodge has been working with the province throughout the last year on trying to come to an agreement for the new lodge. They are currently working on a Class D estimate and architectural design of the building. These documents will provide the financial data necessary for the province to continue discussions on the replacement project. These documents will not be completed and submitted to the province until fall of 2022. PASM Aquadi Lodge Incorporated is seeking an extension of the first right of refusal on the land at the corner of Bar Road and Champlain Avenue until November the 30th, 2022. Please see attached letters for background information from PASM Aquadi Lodge Incorporated on the processes with the province and request for extension from the town. The motion, Your Worship, is as follows. That council, that the council of the town of St. Andrews provide an extension until November 30th, 2022 for the first right of refusal on a conditional purchase and sale agreement with PASM Aquadi Lodge Incorporated, PLI, for a 12-acre portion of town land having the PID of 01325471. This agreement will be subject to the following terms and conditions. One, that the town and the PLI enter into a development agreement for the construction of a new 60-bed nursing home complex on said land. That the closing, that the closing takes place within 30 days after signing the development agreement. Three, that the agreement of sale will expire on November 30th, 2022 if the closing has not taken place by then. Four, that discussion on supporting the concept of in-ground infrastructure for one year with future discussion based on cost estimates from engineers as of November the 30th, 2022. I, Your Worship, so move this.
Thank you. Could I have a seconder for that motion? I've got Deputy Mayor Akagi will open this up for discussion. Seeing none, so I will call the question. All in favor of this motion? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye, Your Worship.
And that's everybody, so that has been carried. Next one, Counselor Heenan.
Your Worship and Council, this is PED 220713. Bylaw number 22-04 being the building bylaw for the town of St. Andrews, second reading. With the recent changes to the Building Code Administration Act, the town of St. Andrews is required under the province of New Brunswick to adopt a new version of the building bylaw. Provided with this report is a new version of bylaw number 22-04. Council still needs to complete three readings of this bylaw to pass. This bylaw will repeal the existing building bylaw 19-03. Changes to the bylaw include: Bullet 1, enhanced definitions. Bullet 2, more focused purpose. Bullet 3, modifications to exemptions of accessory buildings. Bullet 4, obligations of constructors. Bullet 5, building permit posting requirement and notices for inspection. And final bullet, renovation or suspension or permits. First reading occurred on July the 18th, 2022. A draft copy has been posted on the town website for the public to view. It is recommended council move to second reading. Staff will put a notice out for the third reading to be done by title and bring to the first regular council meeting in September. And the action, Your Worship, is that council grants leave for the second reading to the bylaw number 22-04 being the building bylaw for the town of St. Andrews. I so move it, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Heenan, seconder. Counselor Blanchard. We'll open this up for discussion, even though it's kind of a mandatory thing. Seeing none, all in favor, oh, sorry, go ahead, Counselor Hurdle.
Thank you, Worship. Just one quick question, maybe Xander, you can answer this one. I know that if no work happens over a 90-day period, the permit is, is my understanding revoked. Would someone need to begin at point A to start the process again if building were to continue?
Um, the way it's worked up until now is it's at the discretion of the building inspector. And I think currently it's actually six months. I just want to look here and see what the actual timing is, conditions, I think. Anyways, I think it would still be at the discretion of the building inspector. So we, one thing that's happening, yeah, it's within six months of permit approval. So if the inspector really feels like it needs to go back to square one and there needs to be new application, then they would, they would ensure it happens. But if it's, you know, we've seen a lot recently with supply chain interruptions, like heat pumps, for example. People are waiting to put them in and, and, you know, they, sitting on a container somewhere, not here. And our building inspectors have been pretty understanding of people needing a little bit of extra time in those circumstances.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? I'll call the question then. All in favor of going to second reading? Please signify by saying aye. That's everybody. It's my turn to read. Bylaw number 22-04 being the building bylaw for the town of St. Andrews. I will read this by title. One is definitions, two is purpose and scope, three is exemptions, four is notice of commencing construction, five is posting on the premises, six is obligations of constructor, seven is stages of construction, eight is notice of readiness for inspection, nine is retention of documents, 10 is request for information, 11 is application for permits, 12 is fees, 13 is refusal to issue permit, 14 is suspension or revocation of permit, 15 is terms and conditions, 15 is repeal, or sorry, 15 is terms and conditions, 16 is repeal. This was read the first time the 18th day of July of 2022, read the second day of August 2022, and we'll revisit this in September, council. At this point, we are through our motions for this evening. So we're heading to new business, which there's nothing, which brings us to question period. Any questions on anything that was in the agenda this evening? Seeing none? Any questions from the public online or through email, Mr. Nauper?
So, Your Worship, we don't have anybody in attendance online and I've received no emails.
Perfect. Thank you very much. So one last call in the room. Seeing none. So at this point, we're going to go into counselor and deputy mayor's comments. So I skipped this last month. I was excited. But any member of council? Deputy Mayor Akagi.
Yeah, I'm doing a lot of talking tonight. But first of all, Jessie Davis is in our, what do you call this, audience? And I'd like to congratulate her and her dragon boat team for winning in Nova Scotia in their category, first place. So our little town of St. Andrews is noted in Nova Scotia. So congratulations to your dragon boater. Very honored to, so I know how difficult dragon boating is and it's wonderful that we have such great enthusiasts and that they've come back with a first place title. That's wonderful. And I also heard on the radio that Mrs. Flamer is getting an award in November the 2nd. So congratulations to Mrs. Flamer and thank you for all that you do. And we appreciate it and looking forward to seeing the award in November the 2nd. And the last thing I've already talked about was Indian Point. I still want it to be called Indian Point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other member of council? Counselor Heenan.
Going to say this at the July council meeting. I just wanted to mention a big thank you to the, to the town and the staff of the town for putting together a wonderful July first celebration. To the fire department for their diligent from working from 5:00 a.m. until midnight. I just can't believe the dedication and the dedication of all our town staff and all our town folks and all the volunteers. So I just wanted to say a big round of applause and a big thank you.
Thank you very much.
Pardon me, Mayor, it's Caroline, not Jessie. I got so excited when you gave me the opportunity to talk. I said the wrong name. So I'm going to get fired now.
I noticed, but I wasn't going to point it out on camera.
Oh, sure. Yeah. You guys would point any of my mistakes out.
Any other member of council?
Sorry, Caroline.
No, we're all good. Well, thank you.
Your Worship, just can I add to one point to Counselor Heenan's?
Certainly can.
So as part of the Celebrate Canada, when we submit our grant funding and our finalized report, we were actually randomly selected this year as part of the review process. And we got full kudos from the federal government on Canada Day. Specifically, and I'll mention this, CHCO TV got mentioned for their great video of the parade and the correspondence. So they were actually very impressed with that being tied in. So congratulations, CHCO.
Thank you. Well rounded out, Mr. Nauper. I don't think there's any other comments. I'm good. I was going to mention the Order of New Brunswick for Mrs. Flamer, but thank you Deputy Mayor for pointing that out. So at this point, I'm going to look at 7:15 p.m. that council move into closed session per the Local Governance Act. Section 68-1C, information that could cause financial loss or gain to a person or the local government or could jeopardize negotiations leading to an agreement or contract. Could I have a mover to go into closed session, please? I've got two. So I've got Counselor Heenan moving, seconded by Counselor Hurdle. All in favor of going to closed session? Please signify by saying aye. That's everybody. So we'll give a few moments for everything to shut down. Thank you very much for everyone for attending.